Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the April session of the Pauling County Planning Commission. This time, if you have an audible device, please turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to recognize and welcome one of the members of the Pauling County School Board, Ms. Collette. Thank you for coming. If you have any comments or critiques, please save them for afterward. I'll talk to you then. Also, I want to take a moment to welcome Jacob Wicks and Susan Browning from the Pauling County School District, sitting in, providing any commentary as necessary on applications that we have before us. So, thank you for your participation. This time, I will entertain a motion or ask the Planning Commission, have you had a chance to review the minutes from the previous session of this body? Do you have any questions, comments, concerns, edits? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from March 22, 2022.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele. I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Before we get started with calling applications up, I'll state this generally, and I'll probably repeat it a few times. The applicant has 15 minutes to present their application. They may utilize all of that time or conserve some for rebuttal if necessary. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of that application will use this same pool of 15 minutes that the applicant has. If you have anybody standing up behind you wishing to speak, please be mindful of their time and conserve some of it for them. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns has 15 minutes cumulative time to speak as well. Again, if you have anybody lining up behind you to speak, please be mindful of them and give them an opportunity as well. All comments from the lectern are to be directed to the Chair, the Chair being me. At this time, I would ask Mr. Robinson, who I've forgotten the introduction of anything, and if not, please introduce the first application.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Just wanted to make a couple announcements real quick.
Yes, sir.
Application 2201Z, Richard Butler. This is a rezoning on Marshall Fuller Road. That one has been moved to the May meeting. That one still has some legal issues through the estate. And I know, just talking to the applicant, that that is getting close to resolving. The next application, 2207Z, Samuel Kelly Gall. The application has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
So, the first application is 202206Z, application by Ashley Overton requesting to rezon 7.969 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to A1 Agricultural for agricultural purposes and K-9 breeding program. Property is located in Land Lot 631 and 666, District 2, Section 3. The property address is 180 Kingsington Path, that is on the west side of Dallas, I mean Davis Mill Road, St. Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with no stipulations, and applicant is present. We have also had no opposition on this one noted.
I believe we have one abstention on this application.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to abstain. I'm a neighbor of Ms. Overton's, so...
Thank you very much. So, if the applicant's present, please come forward. When you get to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair before we get to any questioning. Planning Commission, also, as a standard, I wanted to remind you, if you're going to speak, please turn your mic on so that it can be heard, both here in the audience and to people who are watching live streaming.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Overton, as it was stated. Yes, sir, may I answer your question?
I didn't have your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm abstaining from the discussion. You and I are...
Oh, Roger. Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So, our intent for our land is essentially to be able to have horses. We have floorboard fencing, and we also have a 30-by-60 barn that houses them. It does have running water and power. And then, we also have a K-9 breeding program that has ran out of our home. We have a three-level home, and the bottom portion of our home is basically housing part for moms to come in and have their puppies. They stay in my care for the eight weeks per the Department of Agricultural Regulations. And so, instead of having a kennel or something like that, we utilize what's called a guardian home program. The guardian home program is very beneficial for multiple types of families because of the high demand and also the price point of our puppies. A lot goes into it. And so, it allows us to be able to place dogs that have a breeding commitment in a home that maybe was less fortunate, that couldn't afford maybe that top-of-the-line dog. So, we place those dogs in a guardian home program, and that dog has a breeding commitment for, you know, X amount of years or X amount of litters, whatever's best fit for the dog. So, we utilize that program to ensure that we don't have, you know, all of our dogs in a kennel. I have my primary dogs, my personal dogs. They reside in our home. And so, that's primarily what our program thrives off of, and that's how our program grows as well.
Thank you very much. Couple of questions for you.
Yes.
What type of dogs do you work with?
Yes, sir. It's Golden Doodles and Bernie Doodles.
Yes, why?
So, it's a Golden Doodle, which is a golden retriever bred to a poodle. And there's multiple levels of generations. But there's also a Bernie Doodle, which is a Bernese Mountain Dog, and also a Poodle bred together. And we also do extensive health testing. All of our dogs have certifications for their hips, elbows, heart, eyes, and patellas. And so, we do a full DNA panel as well to ensure that we are not breeding, and I say "we," it's really "me," but to ensure that we aren't breeding affected dogs that are going to have symptomatics, issues, you know, after they have left my care.
At any given time, what are we looking at as far as number of dogs not your own that would be residing on the property?
So, I would proba-- now, are we counting puppies? Are we counting puppies? Are we counting adult dogs, or are we counting all as a whole? Because that's a big...
Let's start with the all-around figure.
Well, right now, it is 28 puppies, and it would be, not including my personal dogs, there would be three, three mamas, because there's three litters. So, you'd have three adult breeding dams that are there right now, and their offspring, and then my personal three dogs.
How quickly do the puppies transition out?
Eight weeks.
So, you stated that at the beginning, but that is pertaining to...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Questions from the Planning Commission?
There, where do you keep them in your house? In the basement?
Is there a certain area?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So, I actually brought pictures. I'm not sure if you'd like for me to show them.
Pass those to us.
Have them on the iPad. Did you, I brought them on the iPad. I apologize.
We'll suspend the discussion point if you want to just walk around and show us.
Yeah, absolutely. So... Let's... I'll also give you guys, I can come up, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're home, bud.
So, this is the exterior area. It's completely fenced in. They have like their own designated area. And then, yep, oh, there you go. Okay. There it is.
Okay.
Extra. And then, each of the individual moms, they have their own whelping box, and they also have food and water where they can basically come in and go as, like, it's just like all moms, we need to birth, right? We need to be able to escape from our children.
Can I see that other picture?
The first one?
Yes.
So, somewhere is that in your garage, or you separate them from one?
So, no, it is in our home. So, we have a upstairs garage, and then we have a lower-level garage. This is the...
So, that's in the outside element. How long do they stay there?
It's only supervised. So, they're always inside our home. They, unless I'm outside, because hawks, they're out there, especially in our area. We allow them to go out, we supervise when they're cleaning them, or playing with them, or socializing them. They're out there supervised. They're in our house, they're out there. But my moms and my bigger dogs, adult dogs, you know, you let them go out, they will be out there playing and socializing themselves around the other puppies.
So, basically, what you do is, once you breed them, and they're getting ready to birth, they come to your house.
You got it?
They birth, you take care of the puppies in the monument, you help distribute the puppies.
Yes, ma'am.
Sell the puppies, and then they go back, and then they go back to their home.
Yes, ma'am. You've got that, absolutely. All right. So, we don't house all guardian home moms and breeding moms, because they're going to have to run based on health, and that's just something personally...
So, it's just for a period of time, once they, babies are born?
Yes, obviously. And obviously, they'll come to me when the moms need to be bred, or ultrasounds, or progesterone tests need to be done, or health testing as well. But yes, ma'am, it is a short period of time. I usually tell my guardian homes, it's usually around nine weeks max, because I usually get them a week before their due date, so I can get them in their whelping box and settled in my home, because they do come from us. A lot of these dogs, I have raised my own, so they're used to my home. They were brought up in my home. So, it's definitely something that is not continually a priority. They may never afford. I'm not sure how to show you, but this is their whelping box area. This is that garage where that one picture kind of leads out. But you guys can see that they have their own individual areas. It's four and a half feet tall.
Okay. I have a question. How do you dispose of their waste?
The feces?
Yes.
And the trash man.
Okay.
And then garbage in a plastic bag, and then, I feel like any, the way anyone else would dispose of their feces, in a bag, and then just leave it to the trash man. This is what they look like.
Never seen one. I'll bet you showed it to me.
Yes, sir.
I'm just getting educated.
And then, the Bernie Doodles are black and white, so I love them. And then, they're gray. This is where they're housed, primarily to have their puppies in their own area. This is a Bernie Doodle. This is our stuff.
Okay. I'd like to ask staff, the building, it's on the, looks like the east side of the property. Does that, is that meet standards as far as the zoning? Does the, is it setback enough on that building off of the property line?
Mr. Lake, that, that building is a little bit too close to the property line. That was one reason we moved it last month, so we could deal with the, it's a barn. When it was originally permitted, I believe it was just for an accessory structure, which meant it would have met the setback, but once it transitioned to actually barn use, that setback got greater, which now we're working to take care of. She's got the new survey for the barn back there, and we'll be working through an adherence process on that.
So, she'll have to get a variance on it?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? The 28th that you listed, as far as having 28 dogs in your house, understanding three of them are adult, the rest are puppies, is that the maximum that you would see?
Her mental capacity, yes. I would probably say, three litters is probably my max that I feel I can take on. I took on four at one time, and being a mother of three, and running my own business, and doing it, I feel like ethically correct, you know, three was probably my max. But it is Mother Nature, and so it really just depends on when these mothers cycle and when they go into heat, as to when, you know, if I have one going out and one coming in, as in, one's turning two, eight weeks old, they're leaving, and then another one coming in, it's going to be within that, you know, nine-week frame that I would keep the puppies estimated.
Any questions from Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Do you sell the, or do you offer puppies to the public, or do you provide some pet stores?
No pet stores. I'm a very OCD breeder, like, I like to know where my puppies are, what hands they are in. So, with that being said, I'm part of an organization that's called Ghana. It is basically the Golden Doodle National Association. And so, I have to have certain certificates for all of my dogs, and I uphold all of them. And so, to answer your question, there's no, there's no pet stores, pet land, or anything like that. It's really, they call me, they have to pass an interview with me, and I have politely said, if we're not a good fit, you don't get one of my dogs. So, it is primarily the public on my own accord. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from Board of Commissioners? Thank you. Ms. Overton, you may take your seat.
Yes, sir.
There's time remaining for anybody who would wish to speak on behalf of this application, if you would like to come forward. Hearing none, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-06-Z. I said that right, didn't I? Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed?
Abstention.
And two abstentions. Motion passes five, zero, and two. Again, this will not be the final action taken. It will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 7:00. Applicant has to be present for it to be considered. Anybody else having an interest should be there as well. Just a second. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 202208Z, application by Jonathan Jones, Elite Engineering, requesting to rezon 5.03 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B1 General Business in order to construct a 4,500 square feet gas station convenience store. Property is located in Land Lot 789, District 2, Section 3. The proposed site is located at the south side of Scoggins Road, east side of Buckcannon Highway, and Paul Harris Road, St. Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval with six printed stipulations. And I've had no inquiries on opposition on this one.
The applicant, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, staff, public. I'm Jonathan Jones with Elite Engineering. I'm here representing zoning request 202208Z for Mr. Matt Carter. It's a little bit over five acres, located at the intersection of Buckcannon Highway and Scoggins Road, which are both GDOT-regulated roads. The property meets the future development map for commercial corridor at that intersection. It meets the comprehensive land use plan. My client has reviewed the six zoning stipulation, and he is in agreement with those zoning stipulations as read. So, I am here to answer any questions you might have about this application, or use the remainder of my time to rebuttal.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I've got a question. Jonathan, on your side, plan, is that an access point on Paul Harris?
Yes, that is a proposed access point on Paul Harris.
And it meets the, one of the six stipulations?
It does not meet the stipulation for a full access. It does meet it for a ride-in, ride-out. So, that'll be something that we'll have to work with staff to see if there's anything that can be done to achieve a full access at that location. If not, it will unfortunately be a ride-in, ride-out.
Okay.
The main access will be off of State Route 120 connector, which is Scoggins Road.
Any other questions to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Stover?
As far as the soils, I mean, I know the area, soils are pretty pitiful out there. Have y'all had the soils ran to see...
Yeah, so, we did a soil analysis of level three on the five acres. It actually turned out really good. The remainder of the property is, is not very good and conducive for septic, but we have enough soil to support a convenience store. Most of that area on that south side down in there is a packlet or a wet variant packlet, so it can handle a conventional septic system and meet the requirements of Pauling County and the Environmental Health Department.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Is there any intent to have other ancillary uses of the property besides a convenience store, being like a car wash or anything like that?
Not at this time. There is a parcel that'll be left over from what the gas station will utilize, and it will be zoned. There's not an intended use at this point. So, it's, it's basically zoned in the frontage is basically what the intent was.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application?
Yeah, I do.
On behalf?
No, I'm opposing.
Okay, I'll call on that in just a moment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Well, as a matter of fact, if there's no one here to speak on behalf, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come forward, sign in at the lectern, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
My name is Cyril Watness. I live at 1189 Paul Harris Road, sir, which is not very far down the road from where they want to do this. No one knew about this, except one person on that road got a letter about any of this. We just found out this yesterday, and from what I understand, this thing was just posted, and it was posted wrong this morning out at the road. Not only that, is, I have a list here of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 gas station convenience stores, all within six miles of that corner. I worked at a Texaco station at a midnight shift in Hyrum. And if we look at the news, there's nothing but trouble at gas stations, killings and shootings and carjackings, and I think with this many gas stations already, and at that corner, I have been calling the Sheriff's Department, and this may be another issue, but we can't even slow the traffic down on Paul Harris Road. We can't slow the traffic down on 120. We can't slow the traffic down on Buckcannon Highway, and I have called several, several, several times to see if someone would just put up a speeding sign to slow them down on Paul Harris Road. There's been five accidents out there within the last two months on Paul Harris Road, and one of them was a motorcycle going so fast, he tore up my mailbox in the ditch, and I've never heard another word since that. I had to fix the mailbox, and I had to fix the ditch. But with this many gas stations, and who knows how long gas is going to be at $4 or whatever, I don't understand why we're going to build another gas station when all of these are within, and some of them are only one mile, .8 miles, .3 miles, 2.8 miles, 3.3 miles, 3.2 miles. Every corner, there is a gas station, and I'm saying trouble is going to come more in the Pauling County, the more gas stations we have, because every gas station, there is trouble. When I worked at the Texaco station in Hyrum, there was trouble. Folks wanted to come in and buy liquor out of that gas station at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. And I, I'm not opposed to liquor or any of this stuff, but this stuff creates issues, and if you can't get a speed sign, how in the world are we going to slow down the crime with this many gas stations already? I'm saying we don't need another gas station. And so, if I want, if you want this list of them, I would be glad to leave this list with you. And I think there's a few other folks that are here to oppose this, so what, if we're only limited to 15 minutes, or if you have a question for me, I'd be glad to take it, and somebody else can have mine for it.
I would like to go back to the first statement that you made, that the posting for this hearing was wrong.
That's right. There's a gentleman here to tell you about that.
So, what I would like to do, if you will bide with me for just a moment.
Okay.
Chris, can you allude to the posting and how it was sent out, and who was notified, or at least adjacent properties would have been notified correctly?
That's correct. Letters were sent to adjacent property owners, and also, sign was posted on a property. It did come to our attention that whether the weather, wind, or sign was removed at this location, but the applicant came and a replacement sign was issued. And also, a notice was run in the Dallas New Era.
All right. Is there any questions to staff regarding that issue?
So, you stated the notice sign was, was down for a while. How long was it down?
It's my understanding, maybe a day or two. It was, it was posted correctly...
Come up here if you'd like.
At the 15-day mark. That's required 15 days' notice. It was posted at that time.
The first, the first, the first sign that went up was probably the size of this paper right here. I don't have no idea, other than there was a picture taken of that, sent to me. I never got a notice that anything was going up on that corner.
Is your property directly adjacent to this property? Does your property bound it on either the northwest side?
No, sir, it is not.
Okay. Properties that are directly adjacent to the subject property usually will receive the mailed notice.
Okay.
So, that may not be why, that may be why you didn't receive a notification in the mail. However, the posting the property is what I was questioning.
Yeah. And the posting was out on the road. And what I was saying was, I got a notice from someone that was connected to that of this size. This morning, there was no sign up there whatsoever until probably after 8:00 sometime, because I had to go to town. There was nothing, nothing up there. And then, there was a sign, I don't know, I'm assuming it was that big. The first sign, no bigger than a piece of paper. The next sign was, I mean, huge, and that was the only one this morning, that, and it was sometime after 8:00 that it had to be put up, because there was nothing out there this morning. And, and that goes back to this. I mean, I just, my whole point is, I don't think we need another gas station when there's, I named them all off here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Robinson for a second?
Sure.
It may. What is the policy on the signage when you have three road frontages here? Do they have to be on one, two, or all three roads, or one sign, multiple signs? What is the county policy?
The actual policy is, the property has to be posted with a rezoning sign, given the time, place, notification of what the district you're coming to or moving from into.
So, it could be just on Scoggins, as to where people travel in Buckcannon, or Paul Harris.
Right. We try to provide, when we have multiple frontages, we try to provide additional signage. It's, it's not a written policy, but that is something we've reached out and have done.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brooke Rowe, and I live at 3708 Buckcannon Highway, which is the one mailbox that received the letter about this. We have security cameras at our gate. There's been no signs out there until 8:40 this morning. 8:40 this morning is when the sign was posted. We have teenage children, and it's going to severely affect us getting in and out of our driveway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Robinson for a second?
Sure.
It may. What is the policy on the signage when you have three road frontages here? Do they have to be on one, two, or all three roads, or one sign, multiple signs? What is the county policy?
The actual policy is, the property has to be posted with a resounding sign, given the time, place, notification of what the district you're coming to or moving from and to.
So it could be just on Skoggins as to where people travel in Buchanan.
Right.
Or Paul Harris.
We try to provide, when we have multiple frontages, we try to provide additional signage. It's not a written policy, but that is something we've reached out and have done.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brooke Rowe, and I live at 3708 Buchanan Highway, which is the one mailbox that received the letter about this. We have security cameras at our gate. There's been no signs out there until 8:40 this morning. 8:40 this morning is when the sign was posted. We have teenage children, and it's going to severely affect us getting in and out of our driveway. The security, our farm gate, we have two entrances. We have the Georgia Power entrance, which is the farm gate directly across from Skoggins. And then our driveway is just right past Paul Harris. Since we've lived there for two years, three times that gate has been run through because people don't stop at that stop sign. That's just in two years. People constantly are pulling over because they're broke down. The speed is definitely a problem. When you talk about safety for the kids, you know, my teenage drivers, not only that, but there was a shooting at the Chevron at McDonald's within the last year, right at Skoggins and 61. And then there was also another, two incidents, I do believe, at the Rosa Store at Chevron right down there. I just don't feel like that's necessary with the other gas stations that are available to put one right there and cause even more danger for everybody. People that just have to drive up and down the road, 18-wheelers, the rock quarry is right down there. You've got dump trucks coming up. It's, I just do not think that it's a great idea. That, and then we are also a cattle farm, so it would probably impact our cattle as well with all of the noise and pollution.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or have questions, comments, or concerns? Please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
My name is Andrea Postel, and I am part of the Postel family at 3612 and 3580 Buchanan Highway. Been familiar with this area all my life and definitely seen a lot of changes come through here. Traffic is horrendous at this intersection and on this road. Every day, traffic is backed up, two or three driveways on each side with people waiting to turn on Skoggins Road. As I said, dump trucks, 18-wheelers, speeders. My daughter is a deputy in the county. She will be in her vehicle, her county vehicle, and people will pass her on Buchanan Highway going over 65 miles an hour. There has to be an answer, but I just do not see that the traffic and the congestion in that area can support this, not right now. It is a problem. And I understand GDOT has been working and looking at this, trying to figure out a solution just for the normal residential traffic. I don't know what will happen if we add a commercial in that area. And the crime rate is bad. I've even had somebody killed at my driveway, or my parents' driveway, two years ago. They were hit. It was a hit and run. I came home from work and found them. So, I mean, people are flying on this road. I mean, when I say 65, 65 would be the standard 40. It's probably 70 and 75. And anybody that knows Buchanan Highway knows that that area is extremely hilly, there are gullies, and there's just no safe place to pass on Buchanan Highway. They're still doing it. So that's just my thoughts at this time.
Thank you very much. We have about four more minutes left.
That's my driveway, directly across. It's hard to get out and in right now.
Directly across from what, please?
That gas station. That's guns that they want to put right there. So I'm 3708.
Across Buchanan Highway.
That's correct. There's two entries right there.
And your name was again?
Chris Rowe, sorry. So one's a farm entrance, one's a primary driveway. It's already hard enough to get in and out. No matter what you do, if you put a red light roundabout, whatever, it's going to be impossible for us to get out of our driveway in the mornings. It's going to be impossible for us to get in in the afternoons. And that's our main concern, is safety. We've got teenage kids, older parents. You know, it's all about safety. Bring a gas station, late night, people looking for something to drink, bring trouble. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes? Please sign in, state your name, address your comments to the Chair.
Hi, my name is Shyla Crenshaw. I live in Harris Place subdivision, further down on Paul Harris. Like mentioned before, I think the traffic also is going to be an issue. I work in Cartersville and Rome, so when I leave for work, I have to come down to this intersection every single morning, and again, come back home that same way. That's not an easy intersection to get in and out of, especially during that morning and afternoon rush hour. People that drive Buchanan, that's kind of like at a top of a hill, so you can't always see how fast with people speeding coming up and over. There's been times where I've thought it's been in the clear, and I go to pull out onto Buchanan Highway, and cars are speeding out either way. And if I wouldn't have been paying attention, you know, who knows what that could have been like for me or other drivers. I also like to ride road bikes. We like where we live now because we can safely drive our road or ride our road bikes. You know, we'll like to come down Paul Harris and hook over to Skoggins and then do some backroads through there. With a gas station there, I don't think that would be possible for us. We've also got other bike riders who like to come down throughout, you know, Marshall Fuller, Paul Harris, because it is relatively safe right now with traffic. But I think the addition of that gas station there would not only be dangerous for drivers, but also cyclists as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition to this application? There's about a minute and a half remaining. Hearing none. Before we bring the applicant back up, I would like to ask a question of Director Jones of the Paulding County DOT with regard to Paul Harris Road. There was one comment made about trying to get a speed sign. I don't know if that's a speed limit sign or a speed detection device type sign. But is there any concerns that you can bring forward with regard to Paul Harris Road or any plans the DOT has now?
Typically, county roadways, we sign speed limit signs based on the length of the road. Our internal policy is to place speed limit signs roughly 10, you know, basically 10 times the speed limit, something. So, actually, yeah, 10 times the speed limit. So Paul Harris Road, I believe, is posted for 35, so there'll be speed limit signs roughly every 3,500 feet. Try to place one on either end of the road, start, and signs at that type of spacing. So there should be a speed limit sign as you're coming off Buchanan Highway onto Paul Harris there right now, existing. If there isn't, we can put one up.
And the proposed use for this particular property, and again, I'm asking educated opinion with regard to traffic congestion, how would that be impactful to the surrounding roads? I know GDOT controls State Route 120 Connector, which is Skoggins Road, and Buchanan Highway, which is 120, State Route 120. Really, the only road that Paulding County has direct control of is Paul Harris. But in your educated opinion, how would this impact them?
Well, basically, this type of land use, as a gas station, convenience store, there's a group called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They produce a manual, and they basically project, based on land use, how many trips you could expect for a development. For residential subdivisions, typically based on the amount of homes. Gas stations, it can be done by square footage of the gas station or the number of pumps. Staff estimated the total trips for this particular development based on pumps, which I believe there were 12 vehicle fueling stations, eight gas, four diesel. The national, again, the national average, that's where these numbers come from. They're taken from studies all over the United States. Based on 12 pumps, you can expect about 3,200 trips per day. That's the number. And that's over 24 hours.
Is that a sizable impact in your estimation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you. 3,200 trips. When you look at that, whatever it is, report that you were, that you were mentioning, how you estimate how many trips are coming in and out. They did say that there's several other gas stations on that road. Does that take into consideration, you know, other gas stations? So say if that's a gas station with that many pumps, you can expect this. However, because there are six other gas stations within several miles, would that not take away from some of the trips going in and out?
The manual does not basically include anything regarding proximity of other locations. Basically, it just takes a typical land use. And again, they've done these studies all across the U.S. You know, a typical gas station would draw this many trips. I mean, if there was one within maybe a tenth of a mile? Again, I don't, we don't have that information to go off of. What we do go off of is the hard data that says this number of pumps would generate this number of trips.
Do you believe that limit in the egress and ingress of the gas station strictly to Skoggins Road would alleviate some of the problems?
What I will say is, Paulding County has developed regulations, again, what's used, it was proposed to you, but you've seen as a zoning plat. Basically, for commercial development, they're going to have to come in with construction plans, and those construction plans will have to meet the development regulations regarding spacing, regarding site distance, horizontal, vertical curvature. So those type of considerations would be taken into account based on the speed limit of Paul Harris Road. So if they had an access onto Paul Harris, you'd have to meet spacing requirements. You'd also have to meet, be able to see the cars coming at you from the right and from the left based on the posted speed limit. There's also provisions, development regulations regarding turn lanes for commercial developments. Similar to Paulding County, Georgia Department of Transportation requires certain items to be considered on their roads when there's access onto GDOT highways.
I think it would be rather difficult to install a turn lane of any significance along the Buchanan portion of that property, wouldn't it?
Absolutely. Their, GDOT, you know, they have their encroachment manual, and they're going to utilize that to determine what access you can have. For this property here, it looks like Skoggins Road would be the only access available.
Just playing the what-if game right now. If this application were to see favorable consideration, forward it to the Board of Commissioners and then approval. The plan review process is what you were referring to, that they would have to come through and meet compliance for development standards at that time. If they do not meet the requirements for an entry point along Buchanan Highway or for Paul Harris, they would then only have the access available to them barring any type of a waiver or variance, is that right, off of Skoggins Road?
That's correct.
So they still have to meet Paulding County's development standards, irrespective of what may happen here as far as determining if the use is practicable?
Right. Exactly. The development regulations have to be followed, again, and that's basically provide for the public good to make sure that developments of any type, when they go in, it basically can be accommodated by the existing infrastructure out there, the existing roadway infrastructure. It's not going to cause a significant issue. You don't want to put an access road coming out onto a 45-mile-per-hour roadway when you only have site distance for 15 miles an hour. That wouldn't be safe.
Okay. Any other questions to Director Jones?
I'm sorry, one more question. Do you have the cars per day on Buchanan and on Skoggins?
North of Buchanan Highway, you can find this information on the Georgia Department of Transportation website. There's about 7,100 vehicles a day. South of Skoggins, it's about 8,300. Skoggins Road, just to the east of Buchanan Highway, is about 2,500 vehicles per day.
Just for grins, are you aware what Paul Harris's ADT is?
It's less than 1,000.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Another question for Mr. Robinson. The parcel across from Skoggins currently is on B1, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And B1 is the use they're looking for here. So if they were to purchase the property across the street, they could build a gas station without this board approving it?
That's correct.
Okay. So the trips and everything everybody's concerned about could already be a potential issue right there at B1, across the street? Second question, does this parcel meet the comprehensive plan of 2017?
Staff record, under this, yes. It would.
That B1's on him, if I remember, was originally for a machine shop, was it not?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Was it stipulated to be only a machine shop?
It was not.
Okay.
But the proposed use, and again, this is not, just so everybody understands, the consideration before the planning commission is whether or not the proposed idea, the proposed use conforms with the comprehensive plan of Paulding County and the future land use map of Paulding County, which, by the way, is why we're going through this process now for Paulding County, Dallas, and Hiram and Brasville. It is very needful for people to participate so they can collect your information, but I'll digress and go back to what I was talking about. It's whether or not this use conforms with the comprehensive plan of Paulding as it exists right now in the future land use map. This proposed use does conform an idea to that.
We feel it does conform to the comprehensive plan. That's one of the standards we look at.
So the consideration here is whether or not the planning commission believes that it does, and then whether or not it is appropriately located for the proposed use. So give that as consideration. But I will ask Mr. Jones at this time if you would come back forward and address some of the concerns that have been voiced here and provide any other feedback that you feel necessary.
Yes, Sir Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to come back up. As for the letters sent out and the posted sign, we actually picked the sign up after the initial installation twice, one of which it had tire tracks on it. Just recently, actually on Saturday, I let my guys know that worked for me that the sign was gone, physically not there. I'm buying some land in Buchanan, I'm coming through the area, saw that it wasn't there, picked up a new sign, put it up. So we have pictures of when it was installed both times through the process. So I don't, I don't know what's happening to the sign. I don't know if somebody's, you know, vandalizing or taking it, but the sign has been posted multiple times. Secondly, the three closest gas stations, and you're welcome to measure these yourself, is 3.6 miles to the McDonald's at Skoggins and 61, 3.5 miles to the Chevron at 278, they're near, right where we're at, and then five miles to Rosa Store, where there's two gas stations. There is no gas station between the Vulcan plant and 278, so the dump trucks would be a viable candidate for the use of this facility. I also want to reiterate that gas stations are not destination places. People don't drive to gas stations, except for Buc-E's, on the intent of, hey, I'm going to go to that gas station. The traffic there would be the traffic that's going to be there, and they're going to utilize it. It is there to service the community for their needs of fuel and other supplies. So it's not like, you know, I live in Decatur, and I'm going to drive to this gas station. That's not exactly how that functions. Third thing is, is both of these are GDOT-regulated highways, but Mr. Carter has worked with DOT staff just recently on the dedication of Ridaway. And I'll actually want to read exactly how that's worded. This is from Ms. Stollard, who works with the Paulding County DOT. It says, "We are going to be installing a left turn lane if you're heading south on State Route 120 Buchanan Highway, and a right turn lane if you're heading north on State Route 120 Buchanan Highway." So at this intersection, there'll be a left turn that's being installed and a right turn to alleviate some of the traffic and hopefully the concerns from the lady where people are stacking up to take a left on Skoggins. In theory, that left turn lane will allow the traffic to continue to bypass through. And then the right turn lane likewise will avoid the impediment from people that are coming from the Drake Town area headed towards the Dallas area. They'll be able to pass through or take a right on to Skoggins Road. The fifth thing that I wanted to mention is the proposed outlet for this is on State Route 120 Connector intentionally and not off Buchanan Highway, so that you're actually accessing it. And it gives people that are using this facility the opportunity to determine people that are using this facility the opportunity to determine if they wanna go north or south on the Buchanan Highway or east or west on the state route, rather than have people discharged directly, um, into Buchanan Highway. So, um, I, I, I think that, you know, we, we've, we've, we've done our best to, to try to facilitate a, a plan that, that provides safety, works with the DOT, meets the future land use map, is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and, um, you know, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions, but at this time, um, you know, I'll be happy to answer.
I'll go ahead and ask, planning commission, any questions? Back to applicant.
Uh, yes, on the signs, how, do you know how long the signs were down?
I, I don't know exactly, but I go through there three or four times a week. The first time the sign was like tilted over to forty-five, we put it back up, and we're putting these things up now with wooden stakes. We're not, we're not using the, the cheap metal real estate top signs. The second time, it looked like maybe a four-wheeler had run over it. It was flat, down on the ground. Um, this is only in a two-week period, mind you. The third time, it was gone. That was Saturday. So we, we requested a new sign and put it up. We did put it up this morning, but it's been there. We've sent pictures to, to planning and zoning, so we have documented proof that, one, it was posted. Secondly, it's in the Dallas New Area, and thirdly, anybody that touched this should have received the letter because we provided that information to staff.
So was it, uh, just posted on Buchanan Highway, or was it posted on all three roads?
It, we had one sign that was provided. We put it where we thought the most visibility would be, which would be on Buchanan Highway, so we put it right in the middle between Paul Harris and Buchanan Highway. So anybody turning into Paul Harris would see it, anybody turning into Skoggins would see it, and anybody traveling the corridor or Buchanan Highway should see it. Um, we, we didn't have multiple signs because of the frontage requirement, so that we put it where we felt like it would be seen the most. Um, you know, I've, I've zoned a lot of properties, and at, at no point in my career have we ever tried to hide or impede the view of a sign. Um, you're getting letters, it's in the newspaper, word of mouth, Facebook, everything in the world lets people know that there's a zoning going on, so, um, it's not our intent to hide anything at all.
Uh, additionally, do you know the owner's intent on the hours? Is it gonna be twenty-four hours, or has that even been decided yet?
I don't know that that's been decided yet, no sir.
And also, uh, on the modern-day convenience store buildings, uh, most all of them have a, uh, section of the building that's rented out to other businesses. Uh, do you know if that's planned, or?
It's not planned. I will tell you that, that the intent is to have a, uh, a, a deli slash restaurant, and this one just like the one at Rosa's Store and, and the grands that are heavily used in the mornings for people to get their biscuits and the kids to get it to go to school. But, um, I, I don't know of any other use that would be used other than the purpose of the convenience store.
If Paul Harris Road was used in this development, you would have, of course, upgraded the road in the section that, of your, your property?
Yes, sir. We would meet any requirements that the Paulding County DOT and the development regulations would require, which would be most likely an upgrade from Buchanan Highway to wherever our point of entry would be. Um, all of that should be and, and will likely be addressed during the plan review process, but yeah, a- anytime we've done a development, we have to upgrade the road if it's not to the caliber of what is deemed necessary for that type of development.
Okay.
The state DOT?
Yes, sir.
When are they gonna put the turning lanes in?
Um, Kathy has obviously been working with them. That might be a George Jones question. I don't know about timing. I do know that Mr. Carter did donate right-of-way relatively recently, so i- it appears that some design is already underway, um, but Mr. Jones would probably be more likely to know the timing of such.
We discussed that project this morning. It was actually awarded to Bartow Paving. Um, it's a twelve-month project. It's gonna be a short right-turn lane on Buchanan Highway going on to, um, Skoggins and a left-turn lane on Buchanan Highway going on to Skoggins, and we actually purchased the right-of-way. It wasn't a donation. And, um, I probably didn't expand or expound on this earlier, but when it came to the trips regarding the gas station, there is a factor called pass-by trips, and I should have discussed that. Um, there's typically a percentage of traffic when, um, for a land use, especially for a commercial land use, that, like Mr. Jones had said, you're not gonna make a specific trip for it. If you're going through the area, you're gonna go utilize this particular location. However, those trips, they would normally pass by. Let's say you're on Buchanan Highway going towards Dallas. You may have been on that road before, but now with this new development here, you will basically make a turn to go into the development, and then you will basically make a turn going out. So essentially, you're taking, think of it straight pass-by. They call it pass-by trips, so, so going past the location you turn in, and then you turn out when you're done. So you increase turning movements, but not necessarily add, you know, brand-new trips. Again, there's a factor anywhere's from, you know, twenty-five percent. I've seen up to seventy percent.
So what you're saying is there's not gonna be more traffic, um, because of this? It's just more going in and going out?
No. What I'm saying is there's not of all, let's say, all that thirty-one hundred won't be all-new trips, but there's a percentage of that that will be, um, new trips. I can't tell you what that is. There's been, um, no, we haven't looked at that in depth, or we haven't been proposed anything by the engineer on what that number would be.
What you're saying is there would be more navigational movement by cars in that area due to the advent of this?
Exactly. Instead of going pass-by, you would be turning in and then turning out.
If Paul, Paul Harris Road is used, would there be possibly a right-turn lane into Paul Harris off of Buchanan Highway? Cause there's, it's a misaligned road there.
If there's an access onto Paul Harris from this commercial, I believe, again, that's where the development, our stipulations, one of them was the spacing. So if it was a full access, um, the right-turn lane would be on Paul Harris going into development itself, and then same with its, a left-turn lane, it would be on Paul Harris right-of-way.
No, what I'm saying is there, on Buchanan Highway itself, could the state require them to put a right-turn lane on Paul Harris?
Again, that's something that you'd, I guess you'd have to talk to GDOT about, but, um, I believe they're not showing their development going to that point. So I think what they're gonna look at is where their development is showing their access point, and right now it's shown on this plan as Skoggins Road.
To your knowledge, there's no plans by anyone at this time to realign Paul Harris to a ninety-degree intersection with one twenty, is there? Or is there not at this time? Any other questions to Mr. Jones?
I do. So back, we keep talking about Paul Harris. So if you're six hundred and sixty feet between Paul Harris, their corner property at Buchanan Highway, I mean, the plat only shows roughly a couple hundred feet, so pretty much it's gonna be right-in, right-out.
Again, and that's why we needed to put the language in there as a stipulation that you would have to satisfy. Again, I think sometimes people look at a zoning plat and think, well, this, you know, it shows it on here, we're good. So again...
Your stipulation, I mean, it, it's not gonna meet it. It doesn't have six hundred and sixty feet, so.
I believe they, that property owner owns the other adjacent parcels that'll go along Paul Harris. So if they include that in, you could make, you could meet that spacing.
Okay.
Or use some type of interparcial access.
Because it, I mean, in your professional opinion as a traffic engineer, if you have a right-in, right-out or an access on the Paul Harris, and you're traveling Paul Harris, and you turn into the gas station, that's safer than going to Buchanan Highway, turn right, to turn right on the Skoggins to get into the gas station?
I think people will typically use an access, A, saves time, B, they feel safe. Those are your two, two typical reasons why you'd use one access over another.
Right. Any other questions for Director Jones? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jonathan Jones?
Sandy's got a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Caker, I didn't see your hand raised.
Hi, my question's for Jonathan Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Jones, do you actually plan on building a gas station there, or are you just looking for the zoning?
No, the absolute intent is to use it for a gas station. Um, there's three viable candidates that Mr. Carter has been in negotiations and discussions with. Um, the off-site road improvements and the cost of, uh, associated with them has not allowed them to finalize a contract until we get into design and know exactly what's gonna be required, um, because the buyer's gonna want, Mr. Carter paid for it, Mr. Carter's gonna want the buyer to pay for it. So as it stands right now, it will be a gas station if approved, um, but nobody has, um, officially been, uh, contracted to do this gas station because of the unknowns for the off-site, you know, infrastructure improvements.
Okay, and if it is approved, uh, what are the plans for the lighting, the landscaping, and even the, the building design? Do you have any foresight on that?
I, in all honesty, I don't. It, it, it would obviously, and Mr. Robinson, I'm sure, is about to tell me how this is gonna be, but, um, regulation's gonna dictate a majority of that. Um, I'm sure we're gonna be required to do at or above that standard. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Ms. Caker, the, that is in a corridor overlay district, which would, would require the landscaping, uh, strips and trees. It'd also, uh, have their parking area has to be broken up with landscaping, and it's a limitation of boxed or shielded lights that would not, are designed not to shine back out into the roadways and such.
Thank you.
Mr. Stover?
Sorry. This is for the other Jones. Um, I know you probably don't have these numbers in front of you now, but I'd like to have before tonight's meeting, have the traffic count on Buchanan Highway and Skoggins Road also, if possible.
GDOT has those counts, so.
Well, just traffic count for both roads.
We have that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions to Jonathan Jones?
I have one.
Just for clarity's sake, wanna make sure everyone knows who I'm talking to.
I've got one. So the other Jones, DOT, brought up a point, Mr. Carter owns more property, so this was cut out of apparent track. Any plans, intentions, future thoughts on those? And, and I asked that, the reason I asked that is because of access to Paul Harris again, that if he is planning on coming back to do something else, then can we look at, you know, shifting that access down somewhere down the road instead of that close to that intersection?
So when we got the zoning stipulations, we discussed it. I immediately said, okay, in order to meet a full access, we'd have to be six sixty, which means you would have to, in turn, um, impede into the other property that you own. He owns twenty-five acres of this location. This particular piece of property's five acres, which leaves us twenty acres. He definitely has the land to provide a full access. Um, the cost associated with the improvements of Paul Harris, left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes and all that, may come into the play where it's financially not a, in the best interest of the ultimate buyer of the property and developer of the property to install that. So at this time, we are merely looking for, um, through the, through the review, uh, and engineering process, a right-in, right out at that location. Um, and it may be that could be eliminated altogether. That'll be something that they'll have to determine in the future. Without a doubt, the primary access point will be off of, uh, Skoggins Road. That is the intent.
And I asked that just for, you know, interparcial connectivity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because of...
The remainder of the property frankly will most likely just be residential, um, and it probably will be three or four estate lots. The soils are not very good, so it, it's, it's not a viable candidate for an expansion or, or of, of gas station or anything of that nature.
Any other questions to Mr. Jones? Board of Commissioners?
Thank you all.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion on application twenty-two dash zero eight dash Z. Please keep in mind that there are six listed stipulations, so if you intend to keep those as part of it, reference them, please.
I make a motion to approve with the stated six stipulations.
I have a motion to approve from Ms. Seaver with the six listed stipulations. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes for two and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners for their consideration and final dispensation. Recommend that you be present. Uh, if you have an interest, an applicant must be present for it to be considered.
Okay, next application is twenty-two oh nine Z. Application by Richard Harris. He's requesting to rezon six point five one acres from R2 suburban residential to I-1 lot industrial for storage of, uh, trailer equipment used for his expanding business. Uh, property is located in landlots four fifty-seven and four eighty, District Two, Section Three. Property is located on the north side of Summer Hill Road, uh, east of Paris Road and north of Jimmy Lee Smith Parkway, also known as US two seventy-eight. The address is one oh one backward path. It's in Commission Post Three, and the staff has recommended approval with three stipulations. Uh, just wanted to note that the third stipulation would limit the use to this specific requested use, and have no noted opposition, and the applicant is present.
The applicant would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and board. Uh, my name's Richard Harris. Uh, the name of my company's Harris Diversified. We do, um, outdoor events, um, and about eighty-five percent of our business is movie sets. Uh, we provide, um, temporary power, generated power, and lighting, and temperature control for movie sets. Uh, as you all know, that movies have gotten big in the state of Georgia, even gotten nice in, uh, Paulding County area. Uh, we do about eighty-five percent of what our business does is locations for movie sets. We do most all the, we're probably do more, we do more locations than anyone in the state of Georgia for movies. Um, and we, with the growing business, we have to keep, we are not open to the public. We go to our customers. Um, and we have to keep our equipment in tip-top shape. We do not rent to construction sites, stuff like that, so it, the equipment has to be bigger stuff and nicer stuff stored inside buildings. Um, and, uh, just to keep it looking good and all, but we just, we've run out of room where we're currently at, on the property across the street, and wanting to, um, have more area to park equipment. Uh, we do have a buffer on the front as far as woods and all to, but we keep the place, try to keep it looking very good.
Thank you very much for your presentation. If you could hold on for just a moment, we're gonna ask a couple of questions. Uh, first off, I wanna make sure that you're familiar with the three listed stipulations that staff has recommended, and that you're agreeable to those.
Yes.
Got any questions from the planning commission to Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, I have a question for you. Do you plan on adding any additional buildings or just using the facilities that are already there?
Uh, we just, I, I just added one building that was, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet, and that's basically to house equipment.
Okay.
Uh, keep it clean. I'm putting in three hundred and fifty yards of concrete, and that's to, you know, to cut down on dust and all. Um, I mean, I've spent about, I'll have over four hundred thousand dollars in this building in concrete. Um, and it's, it's basically to keep the equipment nice and clean and in, out of the weather, um, and so that it's, you know, it's not stained. I mean, it's, um, we, um, take pride in our equipment and it looking good. And of course, most of our equipment's black, and so it's hard to keep black equipment looking good.
Is it all your equipment? Do you, you own all of it, or do you lease?
I own all of it.
Okay. So nobody else will be storing there or using it?
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir.
And the, the third stipulation, if I understood right, limits you to just...
And the third stipulation, if I understood right, limits you to just that use?
Yes, yes. And everything we've got, most everything we've got is on trailer. So it's trailered in, it's parked, unhooked, and then pulled out. And most of this is delivered with pickup trucks. One-ton pickup trucks and three-quarter ton pickup trucks.
Any other questions to Mr. Harris from the Planning Commission?
So all of the equipment that you got outside across the street, is it going in there also? Or is this just more? I noticed a light tower just inside your gate there where you had to sign.
Most all of that, once you, you want to stay out on the job, it's not making any money sitting there on the lot looking pretty. I have a business or a location in Atlanta that I'm, the DOT is widening the road where my secondary location was, and I stored equipment there. And they're widening the road, La Vista Road. So I had to basically, once they start that, I wouldn't be able to get, turn a truck around in there without tearing down part of the building. And so I'm leasing or renting that building and moved everything to my Dallas location. And that sort of made us look real full when we had to do that.
Planning Commission, any further questions? So you're saying Paulding County's gonna become your primary place of business then?
It is, yes, sir, yes, sir. It is.
Board of Commissioners, any questions? Well, Mr. Harris, thank you for your time. We're gonna conduct the rest of, you have some time remaining. If you need to come back up, I'll proceed and let you know what to do next.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Hi there. My name's Tony Tibbetts. I'm here on behalf of my two sisters, Rita Tibbetts and Tammy Cohn. We own the property. It's a 34-acre farm due east of Mr. Harris' property. We've owned, my parents bought that property in 1950. It's just been used as residential. Raised cattle, grown lots of trees now. When Mr. Harris' office building, which is between Summer Hill Road and 278, or 78, was built and zoned, it was a lawn mower shop. And then Mr. Harris bought it. All in all, it's been a good neighbor mostly. Kept a little donkeys in the land he's wanting rezoned. It's real cute. But the problem is, is we have recently put that farm under contract to build single-family homes. And zoning this land, this piece of land commercial, would be very detrimental to that deal even going through. And probably, I don't remember, it's a couple hundred homes everyone's put in there. It's a good, that land is good for homes. It's got road access, sewer access, water access. It's just an ideal place. But anyway, so we're in opposition to this. We're in opposition to zoning that particular piece of land commercial. It's gonna be right up behind homes of Paulding County taxpayers. I haven't seen any plots or anything, but that's pretty easy. I don't know why he didn't zone the other half of his land instead of button right up to our landline. It seems as though, I don't mean, a man's got a right to make money. He's got a right to his business. This is storage. I passed so much storage between Hyrum and here coming in. Might have been some of Mr. Harris. It looked just like his stuff in one of them, but there's storage and buildings and lift trucks all up and down the bypass. So for him to have to use that particular piece of land that has always just been homes, it just, you know, it's out of the blue, it's unexpected. It's borderline encroachment. He recently, my poor sister Connie passed away last December, and her little house there, right across from his shop, it's in the triangle, if you've got a map of the layout. My daughters and nephews sold it to Mr. Harris. He wanted to use it as a rental property. But who knows what he'll come back for? And I'm not making any accusations, it's just these are our concerns. And we would hate to lose out on a sale of our family farm that's been in the family for 70 years. And there's storage all over this city. There's storage out here on the way back to his office. It's convenient. I've seen his, I've seen his equipment over at Sweetwater Creek State Park, a hack over there. Always working with movies and stuff. So I don't begrudge the man making a living, but this is storage. It's storage space. It could be anywhere. But for people that buy these homes, to look out their windows, sit on their decks, and look at whatever, you know, it's commercial property, sure you'll keep it up. But there'll be dumpsters, there'll be pallets, there'll be trucks, you know. Go to Villa Rica on Industrial Boulevard and look at that industrial property. It's just inevitable that it won't look as good as property that's not commercial. I guess that's it. We just, we don't want to interfere with our land sale. It kinda came out of the blue. That land's never been commercial. Thank you. Any questions?
We sat at Summer Hill, what's the address on Summer Hill?
I think it's 469.
Okay, thank you.
If you, if you look at the land plot, Summer Hill Road diagonally dissects the farm. It goes within 80 feet of the Big Four Lane on the south side.
So the farm is both sides of the road going up that direction? And both sides are going to be under contract for residential construction?
It is under contract. Currently, it's under contract. 34 acres. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak against the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. Mr. Harris, if you might come back forward. You have time remaining if you would like to address, and again, to me, the comments that were made. If you have anything to add, or if we may ask questions.
I just wished if they had a problem with it or something, they would have approached me. The Tibbetts. I knew Mr. Tibbetts. I knew his father. I knew his sister. Never had the pleasure of meeting him. I would have bought their property had their price been right. I own 30 acres on Summer Hill Road, so. And just, you know, I mean, I think he could attest to the, you know, the fact that I've cleaned that place up. I had, when I bought it, it had three double-wide trailers on it. And tried to keep it looking great. And all I'm asking, sure, it is storage, but I run a tight ship, and we keep our equipment looking fantastic, and we can't keep it at a U-Haul storage facility and keep it washed and waxed and in tip-top shape.
If you will bear with us for just a minute, Mr. Robinson. The requirements for changing this to I-1 in any development that takes place on there still requires an undisturbed buffer between it and zoning that is residential, is that correct?
That is correct. It's a required 50-foot buffer along all property lines adjoining residential.
And understanding that Summer Hill Road may be visible, the property that we're in question here may be visible to some degree from 278, which falls under your corridor overlay district, correct?
You know, I took a look at that, it is minimal. I mean, it's not a lot of visibility at all. Now, his original property on the south side of Summer Hill is at elevation. And you see that, that use, but to go past it to this one is very limited.
I ask that, to go back to you, Mr. Harris. Obviously, anybody, and again, this is, you know, property that Mr. Tibbetts brought up, is property that's under contract for consideration for residential development. Regardless of that, you do have other properties along the roadway that are already residential in neighbor, in nature. So is there any precautions that you, that you plan on taking to ensure that it's not going to be an eyesore to the developed properties around it or the developing properties to the east of it?
Whatever I need to do to make everybody happy, I'm willing to do. I mean, as far as setbacks, we're like 100 foot from the property line to the closest building.
And again, I don't know the mind of the Planning Commission, if they vote for it or they vote against it one way or the other. I just wanted to address, you do have neighbors. Obviously, you've known them or known of them for a while, 'cause you're not new to the county.
Correct.
I would implore you to continue being a good neighbor that I know you have now.
I plan to, yes.
There any questions to Mr. Harris from the Planning Commission?
So I didn't exactly understand with the gentleman. It was just, exactly where is his property in relation to yours?
Looking at the map, their property's to the right of mine.
Now, so I see on the aerial view, there's a group of trees there on the right side of your property, the east side of your property. Is it still looking about like it?
Yes, sir, all that remains.
So you don't have any intention in removing those trees? Or, 'cause that looks like it makes a pretty good natural buffer of existing trees and vegetation there.
And there's trees on the right side of the property that go all the way back to the back. I mean, it's all natural woods.
And also on the north, north side of your property, it looks like there's quite a bit of trees and forest there. Is that all, all that still about the same?
It's all still the same. I've got about 12 donkeys and three llamas in that front pasture out there, and that's all I plan to deal with.
And on the left side, it looks like your drive to that building there is really close to the property line. I mean, it looks like something might need to be done there. There's a, I don't know if you got room or not. It's like something might need to be done there for a buffer or something. On the left side of the property, the west side, the building to the left, far left.
You own that as well, right?
Yeah, that's a barn.
That's a barn, yeah, you see that drive that circles around into it? It's like, that's right on the property line right there.
No, my property line's way over. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's not my property line. I own 27 acres right there. We're only talking, this is just six and a half of the 27.
So this is just six and a half of-
27 acres, yes, sir.
Okay, so you own that to the, to the west too?
To the west. I own the house to the west of it. I own the house to the east of it. And, yes, sir.
I mean, do you ever have any intention of, I mean, if you ever have any intention to sell that, you probably need to provide a better buffer there, way that's drawn there for the zoning purposes.
Now, that in the back, that one building, that's a barn. That we, that was about to fall down when I bought the property, and we completely redid it. And they had dog kennels and everything else in it. It's basically a barn.
I believe the point being made is the property that's being rezoned to I-1 has buffer requirements that apply to it with surroundings. Even if you own the property, there's still a buffer requirement there. I mean, it's, I understand you may be forgiving of yourself as far as that goes, but if you ever were to sell the property, you would need to make sure that you have the correct buffer between you and whoever the neighbor is.
Vegetation or fencing or whatever.
Undisturbed buffer, and Mr. Robinson can give you that number. There any other questions to Mr. Harris?
Defense-in area for pasture.
Now, I just have a statement for you, Mr. Harris. And Ms. Robinson probably went over this with you. Any additions you do out here? If you do concrete, if you do any more impervious areas, you know, you may be subject to have to go back through the county to do development permits or something else. So just keep that in mind as you add to it or you do something if it's approved.
I did go through the county for the building.
Okay. That makes sense, Chris.
Yeah, and, you know, we have a stipulation here. We have to talk about some of the access agreements, and so there would be some additional review process in here with some plan review. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Any other questions? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
At this time, I will entertain a motion concerning application 2022-09-Z.
I make a motion to approve of the three listed stipulations.
I have a motion to approve with the three listed stipulations by Mr. Aston.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. An applicant must be present for it to be considered. Anybody having an interest should be there as well. I'm gonna flip it over, but wait, there's more. Sorry. We're moving to item number five, which is for the zoning ordinance text amendment addressing the City of Hyrum's zoning ordinance. There is a text amendment proposed by the city to remove the R4 multifamily non-fee simple, let me get the magnifying glass, I'm sorry, non-fee simple residential district, the R7 multifamily fee simple non-resident, non-rental residential district, and the PRD planned residential development zoning district. So generally, I would let Mr. Robinson introduce it, but, and you can go ahead and do so. Keep form and fashion in place.
I think you did an excellent job. It is open to a public hearing for the text amendment based on the Procedures Acts and our ordinances to have a public hearing. And this is it regarding those changes. All the changes has been prepared, and you have copies of the ordinance that will be brought before the City Council of Hyrum.
And we will, at this time, take any comments from the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners if you have any. And then I'll open it up to the public input.
Mr. Chairman, maybe you just give us a quick overview, since you are affiliated with the City of Hyrum?
The text amendments requested are basically to fall in line with the changes that have been made at the county with the unified development ordinance. As most probably know that have done business with Hyrum, Paulding County handles the development for the City of Hyrum as far as land disturbance permitting, CO issuances, building inspections, and the like. So in order for us to stay consistent with that, with a few minor deviations, we are moving forward also with the elimination of those three zoning districts, just as the county had. And we're probably, we're in review right now of the unified development ordinance to determine when we can, with whatever changes needed, can adopt theirs. Again, City of Hyrum, and I can speak as the city manager for Hyrum, I can say that I'm very appreciative of Hyrum's, of Paulding County's review and administration of our development in Hyrum. They save us a lot of money through the course of every year. They also do a very good job in doing so. Right now, they're managing two different zoning ordinances and same development regulations, but they manage theirs, and then they manage what we are currently under, which is what they had previously. So this is just a step toward that unification of the same zoning ordinance in and out of Hyrum. Any questions? At this time then, I will open for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please line up at the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
I just, I got a question for clarity. I see that basically the city is removing R4, R7, and PRD.
Correct.
Did you guys previously have the LDQRD? I should know this, but I haven't done anything in the city residential-wise.
We do.
So that will continue to be an option for zoning in the City of Hyrum?
For the time being, I've, just looking down the road, assuming that the council, who is the final arbiter of it, determines what they want to do, they will more than likely adopt the UDO in its entirety and eliminate that zoning district at some point too, I would think.
But you don't know that timing exactly, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Don't want to belabor the point, but at this point, I will close the public comment portion and- And thank you very, very much for participating. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we need to vote on this?
Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think it will.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Again, this is the public hearing. This will be forwarded to the City of Hiram at a reasonable date to address the legal advertising requirements for their dispensation and legal public hearing over this. So, I will entertain a motion regarding the text amendment ordinance for the City of Hiram.
Make a motion to approve the text amendment.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Leggett, second by Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. And now, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn from someone?
I make a motion.
Mr. Steele, I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. I thank you very much for the time. Have a good day.